I call to order the November 22nd, 2021 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Ms. Bates, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates? Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer? Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here.
Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your requests for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, November 8th, 2021, the special meeting, November 15th, 2021, and the business meeting, November 15th, 2001.
So move.
Second. Okay. Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In your polls, minutes are approved as presented. Okay. Mr. Morosky, you have the first committee report. You have five minutes.
Excellent. Thank you. It's my pleasure to present the minutes from the Policy and Equity Committee that met last Thursday, November 18th at 9:00 a.m. right here. We began with a quick update about the potential new vaccine policy requiring students to be vaccinated, which we elected at our board meeting a week ago tonight to not move forward with. That said, we had some interesting discussion. Committee member Bolton reported she's still interested in learning about educational experiences that have close physical contacts, specifically extracurricular activities in curricula at school for creative and performing arts, and whether or not there was an ability to have, I called it a sub-policy, which is not a real thing, but if you'll permit me, a sub-policy for those groups. The action, we advise administration to provide a list of close contact curriculum presented at Policy and Equity on December the 16th. We will not be meeting on December 23rd, which is our normal time. We will meet on December 16th, 2021. Board member Lindy recommended administration be more proactive in encouraging parents and students to get vaccinated, but also the educational piece. We realize people have hesitation, so we know we're doing a really good job. Ms. Bunty has reported to us we made the vaccine available. If there anything we could do, you know, to educate families, make them feel more at ease, he felt that that would be prudent. Mr. Lindy asked to see data on how many students are being quarantined and how much time they are spending in quarantine due to close contact, which I believe has been asked before and asked in this meeting that some of that data would be available tonight. Awesome. I'm getting a thumbs up from Assistant Superintendent Moni that it is, and so we'll have some time for that. I don't know when, probably not now, President Jones is looking to you for advice when we would be able to do that.
Is it something you can do now?
Well, yeah, I'm fine with doing it now. Are you cool with doing it now? So again, for the public certification, I think this is important data, and my colleagues, Mr. Lindy wanted to see how many students are being quarantined and how much time they are spending in quarantine due to close contact. He also questioned if there would have been a different outcome if the questions asked on that were surveys. So pause.
So you all will be getting a daily COVID report. I think you received it today from Phyllis. If not, you'll receive it first thing tomorrow. Today, we had 454 students in quarantine. They typically spend an average of 10 days, including weekends, in quarantine.
Thank you, Ms. Bunty.
So the additional question was, what was the highest number of students in quarantine and what was our lowest number? So at our all-time high, we had 1,350-ish. That was our absolute highest quarantine number. We dropped down into the 200s a few weeks ago, and now we're back up at that 454.
Mr. Lindy? All right. We'll continue. Committee member Bolton stated again her opposition to mandated vaccinations for students. She did suggest that students who may have activities and situations that require close contact, just to repeat that point, perhaps would be something to consider. Athletic vaccinations, General Counsel Hoying updated us that we have adopted the test to play and mask to stay. Students participating in extracurriculars involved in contact or where masks are not worn may continue to attend in-person learning and participate in their activities if they follow the mask to stay, test to play. Mr. Hoying informed our committee coaches on the CPS payroll are subject to vaccine mandates, volunteer coaches are not. Just something so everybody else knows. Vault of our discussion was on attendance boundary lines, history of current boundary lines, legal changes to boundary lines, enrollment policies. I encourage you to read the minutes and attend our next Policy and Equity Committee meeting. We're going to talk about this again. There are three big things I'd like to just address. Ms. Bolton had this on the agenda the past few meetings. It was a topic, I remember when I joined the board, Ms. Bates and Ms. Bolton and I were a policy committee together, and we talked about it a lot then, talked about it a lot the year after that, and then COVID happened. It's getting tiresome saying that, but it's true, and we reinvigorated the conversation as we look to build it back even better. So number one, high-level thing, the history, the early boundaries were based on racial diversity following Bronson versus Cincinnati Board of Ed in 1973. Two, CPS launched our programs in performing arts, foreign language, and Montessori called magnets, designed to draw students to schools with specific focus. Three, since 2001, no major districting except Cairns, Clifton Area Neighborhood School in Hyde Park. In the Cairns example, the board directed the district to follow the actual boundaries of Clifton, Cuff, and Spring Grove Village. Conversation then sort of focused on, you know, what would it look like to re, this is big, we realize this, this is, we're not in the years sort of planned, but like, what would it mean to look at these lines more along actual neighborhoods? The General Counsel Hoying action item will provide our committee and newly elected board members his update on the boundary lines, current city-recognized neighborhoods, and history enrollment policies in the form of a memo. So our three new elected board members will receive this as well. Ms. Bolton was adamant that that be the case. Mr. Hoying reported that it was the board's priority is schools to recognize city neighborhood schools. And another action, Ms. Bolton advised administration to determine how many neighborhood schools are actually reflecting the neighborhoods, sort of part and parcel of the other action, and advised administration to provide maps that highlighted the neighborhoods. Committee member Lindy recommended gathering neighborhood information to have the conversation once a new superintendent is seated, providing a chance for him or her or them to look at the district and all of that is happening in it. We continued our policy audit. There it is, you know, but, so I'm going to miss Ms. Bunty with all due respect, so I'm going to take my minute and a half from Ms. Bunty. That was a freebie. That was a freebie. I didn't count.
I already gave you an extra minute.
Well, then, the policy audit is going great. The questions Ms. Roberts is having lead administrators answer is, does management have written procedures for the board policy? If so, do they support each significant aspect? Is there evidence showing the procedures have been implemented? If so, what are they? Ms. Roberts reported 30 administrators provided input and questions will be addressed by November 30th. Committee member Lindy recommended Ms. Roberts give a rating for each policy, and we will get an update at our next policy committee meeting. We'll make this next one quick. We talked about open enrollment. No secret to anybody who's watched any of these meetings. I am not a fan of those, and we brought it up, and we had a good discussion about open enrollment and the history, why it existed, why it is the way it is now. I gave an action that we determine how much money we are gaining or losing with this policy, because I know one of the original selling points was it brought in money. I believe a couple of years ago, we found out it didn't, but we asked for that information again. And then the administration will research if open enrollment can be offered at Cincinnati Digital Academy only, which is an interesting thing, because right now, the CDA could become a statewide model, and we'd love to have people join it. So we're going to see if that's even legal. We reviewed our policies. You're going to see a ton of them on December 15th, which you're going to have to wait till then to be continued.
Are you done?
It's a cliffhanger, yeah.
Are you presenting?
I did that on purpose, it's a cliffhanger. To make everything.
Any, do board members have questions or comments? Ms. Bowers?
Thank you. Board member Morosky, I just made clarification. Did you say that we adopted test to play, mask to stay? Or was that, okay. So with that, is that for 16 and up where the FDA and CDC approve vaccinations approved other than EUA? Or are we saying that for ABC programs as well for the emergency use dosage, like currently being used now for 511? So I mean, I'm getting clarification about test to play and mask to stay. Is that for all of our kids that are involved in extracurriculars? Or is it just for 16 and up? I'm restating the question, 16 and up, which has been approved by FDA and CDC, whereas the other 511 is EUA?
Yeah. The mask to stay, test to play, isn't the same as the vaccination. So we are not requiring the vaccination to participate in athletics. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding the policy report? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Ms. Bolton, please present the Budget, Finance, and Growth Committee meeting report.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We will do so. We began by what we must do, which is present the five-year forecast, and that will come up about two or three more times during the meeting. We had a full presentation on the finance, at the Finance Committee, of the five-year forecast, and it is included, as you know, in other documents. It was full, it was specific, and it dealt with a number of big changes that might be there, including pass-through dollars, also the other issues regarding the CLIF and embedding the CLIF data that we passed some month or so ago, two months ago for sure, and that embedded keeps showing up, the plan that the administration came up with about the additional money that we've received from federal government due to COVID, how to embed it, how to include it, how to indeed find ways to absorb it when possible or end it in future efforts. Another big topic besides the five-year forecast was that we have a budget process that has already begun at central office and within the schools, as well as understanding it, how shall I say it, a newer budget process, again, developing from the first couple of years of putting it in place, but just look at the minutes, you can see some budget assumptions that the treasurer and others have made as a result. The five-year forecast and the budget effort are obviously related to one another, and building the budgets begins in part with student projections, and those student projections we've seen, also part of the whole board has, in a committee of the whole. And then also, we have to be aware that as a board, we are scheduled to have a budget workshop in January in order to begin to help guide in some of the big areas of concern. So in the minutes, you'll see a number of Saturdays that are mentioned in January, and those Saturdays would, obviously, we already are scheduled to be meeting together for the new year with the new board on January 15th. So we'll leave that back to the president to worry about and work through. Another part that is important as we build this budget and we talk in terms of looking ahead, appreciate the administration's work to be so up to date regarding not only projections, but also up to date on the, what we call the proper maps that will help us understand our own growth. And the superintendent raised an interesting concept is that in this planning, we will have available to us the new census information. The last time we had that, well, of course, was like 10 years ago, but prior to that, it's really almost been 20 years that we've actually applied the census trust and census information to the planning, because that's when the FMP began. So this will be very useful. There's a number of things kind of coming together for us to be able to do this. So appreciated that comment by the superintendent. Then we also talked briefly about our grants, and you know, I rave about this chart all the time, but I do want to do kind of a moment to thank the folks in the treasurer's office, because as we looked at the grant spending now, it's much more balanced than it has been, and that's through great effort, so that we're not getting to the end of the year, and how can we spend this money? And it's been a conscientious effort on their part to deal with that, and I appreciate it. I know the committee did as well. We also then had the memo, which you've received already, and it's repeated in the minutes, the memo from the Assistant Treasurer Hughes about the CRAs, Committee Reinvestment, excuse me, Community Reinvestment Agreements. And as a result of that, we are inviting for our next December finance meeting, Mr. Banish, who is the Senior Community Development Analyst with the city, and we've chosen to have it be our last meeting, where we have two regular Finance Committee members, Ms. Bates and Mr. Messer there, to ask the particular questions, and we need to invite anybody that would like to attend that, other board members or administration. And again, I think that's the conscientious effort to keep a relationship going and to engage. Then we also talking about transportation. We had a kind of a review of the seventh and eighth grade survey proposal regarding the two high schools and the viability of whatever we're trying to do transportation-wise. And a wonderful approach CPS proposed, the kind of investigation, and this has come from a number of board members, proposed a band fleet options. What would that mean? And for whom would it be? And if it's JAFAS, or it's McKitty Vento, those sorts of challenges are ahead as we begin to design for the future. And then finally, the last two items. The Audit Committee has submitted, and had a discussion, and has a couple of proposals about the chairmanship, and that will be revisited in audit. The Finance Committee kind of recommended maybe they resemble our board committee process instead of finding a newer, different one. And then tonight, the last item is our great partnership with Chivviet, both the city and of course, our wonderful school. I submit, hope for approval.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Treasurer Wagner? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I do that all the time. I go back and forth. It's okay. All right. Okay. So we're at the item on our agenda of presentations. Our first presentation is a very special one, and I have asked Ms. Bolton, as Chair of the Finance Committee, to please do the honors of this presentation, and I believe we have a video. Ms. Bolton?
Very proud and pleased, and it's, I think we can be proud and pleased that this seems to be an annual effort because of the excellence of our treasurer, and she and her offices are again being recognized with an award of financial reporting achievement from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. And again, it's so important that we fully appreciate this from a standpoint of the job and also the mission and vision of our district. If we cannot fund it, if we cannot finance it, if we can't spend the money appropriately, and we can't have a good record of it, and you have excellence reporting, then anything we're trying to do will go for naught. So congratulations to our treasurer and her folks, and we have a video to share from the Executive Director of GFOA, Chris Moore.
Greetings from the Government Finance Officers Association. I'm Chris Moore, GFOA's Executive Director. It is my honor to announce that the Cincinnati Public Schools have received the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the 2020 Annual Financial Report. This represents the 21st year that schools have received this certificate, demonstrating your commitment to preparing an annual financial report that is organized, readable, and transparent. Meeting the highest standards required to receive this award is a mark of distinction, of which you should be very proud, and I congratulate your entire staff for this accomplishment. To learn more about GFOA and about this and our other award programs, please visit us at gfoa.org. Thank you and congratulations again on this impressive achievement.
Okay. Board members, questions or comments? Well, I'll just say, congratulations. I've been here six years, and we've received this aw, we, we have received this award every year that I've been here, and Treasurer Wagner, we really appreciate your leadership in this. It's tough, and one thing I can all, that I can say is that you've always been very helpful and supportive and worked toward clarifying the financial processes, and I've seen a lot of work go into improvements, quality improvements, and what have you. So we appreciate your leadership in that. And I know our newly elected board members, you know, are encouraged to talk with you and learn as much as they can about financial stuff. So thank you again. We appreciate you. Wonderful. Okay. Interim Superintendent, please present the next presentation.
Yes. It's with great enthusiasm that I present Dr. Jen Williams, Principal of Hughes STEM High School, for our CPS Is Bright Blue Highlight.
Good evening. Hold on, turn on your mic. It's the...
Got it. Hello. I bring you greetings from the highest points, not only in our school district, but in the city of Cincinnati, and that is Hughes STEM High School. We are the second oldest high school in Cincinnati Public Schools and the only one to stay in their building. So we are history in Cincinnati Public Schools. Next slide. Okay. I got good teacher wait time. So as they're getting the slides ready, I want to share a little bit about Hughes. Hughes not only is an Ohio-recognized STEM high school, but we are nationally accredited. We're actually going through our re-accreditation right now and reviewing all of our programs. We are a growing high school. We are 262 students larger than we were enrolled last year. We operate under our core value of credit. Not only are our students earning credit, but we're all working for credit. Courage, respect, empathy, desire, integrity, and teamwork. We believe that all five of these things are essential to help our students reach their goals of credit. Our academic programming. We offer not only four career tech pathways for our 11th and 12th graders in the area of the Zoo Academy with plant and animal science, but also in engineering, information technology, and health professions. There you go. I'm on slide three. Or four. We are also offering all of our students career tech exposure. Starting in seventh and eighth grade, our students at Hughes experience a program called Project Lead the Way, where they are introduced to our four career tech pathways. We have job shadowing, internships, summer opportunities that go seven through 12. Each Hughes student, next slide. Each Hughes student is prepared for STEM. They experience it in all of their classes and through cross-curricular activity. Next slide. Our programs and opportunities. We not only have a robust athletic program, but we are expanding our extracurriculars. This year, we have added that choir. If you know anything about Hughes, you know that we have a rich music history. With that being said, we have added on James Holmes, who is also the director of the Cincinnati Boys Choir, to lead our choir at Hughes. We are also adding our dance team and have purchased instruments to create a marching band for next football season. So we are growing. Next slide. Our school and community events. We are proud to partner with the University of Cincinnati, our MORE program for young men, and our Girls to Women program for our female students. We have a Cincinnati Children's Hospital clinic right in our building. Our lead agency is the Gaskin Foundation, which is a leader in this area in STEM, and we have the award-winning PBS NewsHour, where our students have received awards and recognitions nationwide. Thank you for your time and attention, and again, greetings, the big red way. Thank you.
Board members, questions or comments? Ms. Bowers?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Williams, for the presentation, and congratulations on your pathway to re-accreditation. This was a phenomenal connection to the presentation from Bon Hill last week regarding their focus on math and science career tech. And I guess this is an administration question, is there a connection? Do we know how many students from Bon Hill actually tracked to Hughes with that focus of the path, the math and science focus career path from Bon Hill for principal calls last week?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I, we have data to show where every elementary student attend in what high school that they elect to go to.
Right. But I'm just thinking that would be a nice feeder if that, their focus on that pathway for career early, because I thought their early career focus on math and science just fit nicely with Hughes to me.
Yes. We offer a showcase for our elementary students. Last year, it was virtual, but this year, it will be in person. We are inviting our elementary students to come in and experience our pathways, work in some labs, work with some of our teachers, and we are excited about that plan for early spring.
And one more question, President Jones, if I can. Inter-alliance extracurriculars?
Yes, I can. So our inter-alliance extracurricular program is not only connected to STEM, but it is a service learning project. And so they build websites for companies that needed, they work with, for example, the company that's building right next door to us, they're partnering with them in learning engineering and giving back to the community in their learning. So it's all about service learning and that connection to STEM.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, and congratulations on the great things that you're doing at Hughes.
Thank you.
Ms. Morosky?
I just wanted to say thank you for the update. Thanks for being here. It's been fun watching Hughes' progress and seeing you step into principal role, Dr. Williams. Every Tuesday, my running route takes me up Macmillan, so tomorrow I will wave, as I'm want to do. And I just wanted to, again, say congrats. I know it hasn't been a year to take the helm of such a big school, but it is definitely one of our schools that I tend to highlight and brag about the most in the community. in the community when people want to only focus on a couple of our high schools. And I like to remind them that we have a number of high schools. When I tell them all the things that go on at Hughes, they can't believe it. When I tell them, half of the employees at the Cincinnati Zoo graduated from Hughes, or more actually, they can't believe it. And, you know, my, my wife and I are already trying to instill a love of the zoo into our son. So selfishly, I'd love him to go through that program just because I want to see what it was like. I think it's really cool. So anyway, it's good to see you. Thanks so much for presenting tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. Both of my parents are Hughes graduates, so very thrilled that it continues to be a great, great school. And thank you for still pursuing or again pursuing the accreditation regarding STEM. That's probably one of the hardest of all the accreditation to achieve. It's extremely specific. And so I wish you well on trying to do that. And I can remember when we first were creating like Hughes as a STEM, a lot of people gave us all these legal things, three or four different legal phases we all had to go through to actually be able to use that title. So appreciate the effort of staff and, and the work that you are doing to not only make it accredited, but get it accredited. It's super, thank you.
My pleasure. Other questions or comments? I'll go ahead.
I'll be very fast. I just want to say thank you so much for all of your enthusiasm and the great work you all are doing. Hughes was the first, I think, graduation I got to attend as a school board member in the spring. And just really enjoyed getting to know the school community better and want to say thank you.
And I'll just close out. In case the public didn't know, hey, what can I say? I am a Big Red and I really am always very enthused to hear about all the great things. I haven't been there in a while for lots of reasons, but I do intend, and I have every intention of coming up there because we've not met formally, but I will. And red looks good. Thank you for being so enthusiastic about what you're doing at Hughes. We appreciate that. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so the final presentation this evening is Superintendent Amat. Can you introduce? Oh, there you are. Okay. Treasure Wagner, sorry, we'll be doing the five-year forecast.
Good evening. Can I have a question? Okay, good evening. Sorry, so in front of you, you should have a giant copy of the five-year forecast and the presentation that was done at Finance Committee. And I have to give kudos to both Kevin Ashley and Kim Hughes, our sister treasure, who did the forecast presentation this year and they did a fabulous job. And so I'm just here to give you the, kind of the executive summary of it and then answer any questions that you might have. So just to remind you and the board, I mean, the public, the purpose of the forecast is monitor our cash solvency and help us with our long-term financial planning. Every school district in the state of Ohio has to report it, submit it twice a year in May and November. And we all use the same format that's dictated by ODE. So it shows you three years of actual history. This is just the general fund. Three years of actual history, the current year, and then the four, four years into the future. Now, the factors that influence it are our new state funding formula, which we have not yet seen yet from ODE. They're way behind their deadline. And so a lot of our assumptions out into the future are just assumptions based on simulated data. We factor in some inflationary rates. Also coming back into the general fund is Chairman Bolton said before, the CLIF fund, if you did the CLIF plan, if you remember, we have a three-year ESSER fund that's helping us to accommodate our COVID-related expenses. And some of the things will have to return to the general fund. So we're trying to phase them back so they don't all hit us in the same year. And then, of course, our student enrollment has a bigger factor in the new state funding formula. And before they used three-year averages and now it's more of a actual, using actual. And then, of course, our collective bargaining agreement negotiations always impact our forecast. Go ahead. Thank you. So it's all about the cash. They always tease me about that because it really is about cash. We bait, we work on a cash basis. We have to maintain a positive cash flow in that three-year window, which is the current year and the two years coming. And we have a board guideline that says no more new levies in the forecast window. And so we have to manage our expenses so that we don't chew too quickly into our cash balances. Also, very important to the forecast is the passage of our renewal levies. We have one coming up next November. It's a five-year levy and we can talk about options about what we can do with that prior to the election next year. As I said before, we have a new state funding formula. It's called the Ohio Fair School Funding Plan. So you may see the acronym FSFP a lot. It's a six-year phase-in plan, although we have a two-year biennial budget. And so the phase-in is helping, is hurting us a little bit. And I'll go into more details in just a second. And that we have to maintain our spending patterns to maintain that cash balance. Go ahead. So just a little bit about the new state funding formula. The first thing it did was eliminated the pass-through funding. So if you recall, they used to give us money, revenue on a per pupil basis for all the students who chose community schools, ed choice vouchers, autism, Peterson Scholarship and open enrollment. So you will see a drop in our revenues, but you'll also see a corresponding drop in our expenditures in forms of tuition expense. They also attempted to calculate a cost of a student. Every school district has their own cost that's different as the base. And they fund, they take your student projections, your student enrollment and fund them through or filter them through a bunch of staffing formulas that are district-wide and not building by buildings. That makes it a little bit challenging for us. And then they also increase their categorical funding. But they say, so for example, they say UX gets X amount of kindergarten teachers. They're using the average state salary at 62,193 when our average salary for the same time period is 71. So we're already missing a little bit of that formula. Okay, next slide. So our, we have done nothing economically and our state share decreased from 46 to 3%. So as a district, we've got richer in comparison to the rest of the state. The student wellness funding, funding that was outside of the formula and recorded in a separate fund has now been put inside the formula and is now subject to that state share. So for every dollar that our students generate, we only get 43 cents on the dollar. So comparatively, the student wellness grant that last year was 12 and a half million dollars. This year, we're getting 3.2, targeted for restricted to student wellness. I spoke about the phase-in process, but here's the impact of that phase-in. So in fiscal year '22, we're losing not $49 million in the formula because of that phase-in. And then the next year, it'll be 39 million. So over a two-year period, we're losing $88 million of revenue. Next slide. This is an example of how the enrollment, the pass-through funding changes for us. This only, the state only funds K to 12 students and preschool disabilities. So our regular preschoolers don't, aren't participatory in this funding formula. But as you can see, in prior years, the bar on the left, the gold bar, represents the total kids that we were funded for. That included the community school kids, the voucher kids, and then who was educated in CPS. And now we're educating the lower bar. Those are just the kids that are in our buildings. And so open enrollment children that come in are considered our kids in the funding formula. Next slide. So our per pupil cost is, was calculated to be $7,211. So they take all the students, all the staffing that they say we get, divided by the number of kids, and it's 7,211. And then they reduce that by our state share. So they're only funding us at 31,45 for our base cost. Compared to prior years, well, let me, let me just finish this. So compared to prior years, our net funding was around $4,000. And you remember, they used to deduct off much more than that when they did the tuition. But so $4,000, anywhere from 39 to 400 over the last three years. When you add all of our school funding together under this formula and divide it by the number of children, our per pupil goes up to 43,59, but it's still not the 7,200 that our children would generate. And that's because we're considered a wealthy district and we have the ability to generate our own local share of funding. Okay, next slide. So real quick here, going fast. Here's a copy or show what our revenue looks like in total for the general fund. You can see the dip between '21 and '22. That's the reduction of the students that we no longer have pass-through funding for. And that's offset by the increase in categorical funding. And then in '24 and '25, you see it start to climb back up. That's what we're estimating what the phase-in is going to do when we get full funding for this parts of our formula. But in, in the big picture, our revenues aren't growing dramatically. Next slide. This is what the state aid side of that looks like. You can see this big, huge dip in between '21 and '22. And then it start, you see the orange is our categorical funding. You can see that growing every year while the blue doesn't grow as fast. Now, if we start really growing our enrollment, this could change our picture dramatically. Next slide. Same picture on the expenditure side of the house. You can see a dip between '21 and '22, and then it starts to climb back up again. The dip between '21 and '22 was the reduction in tuition, which is about $80 million that we paid for, for those students. But those things were offset by our COLP increases and step increases. And then some of the student wellness money coming back, those expenses coming back into the general fund. So it's kind of netted there. The climb between '24 and '25 is the biggest hit where we bring in this CLIF plan black back into the general fund. So we have the ability to control those expenditures, making good sound financial decisions moving forward. We have a positive impact on our forecast. Next slide. But here it is in a nutshell. The dark bar are revenues. The lighter bar are expenses. As long as we keep our revenue under our expenses, we preserve our cash balance. But as soon as we start dipping above, we start eroding that cash balance. And if we continue on the path that we're on, we start, we'll dip into a deficit in '25. So we just have to make sure that we are maintaining our spending decisions and maximizing our revenue opportunities. I think that's the last slide. Yep. So answer any questions you might have.
Okay, questions? Ms. Bower?
Yes, thank you, Treasure Wagner. I just have one question about the student wellness moving into the general fund. How would that affect our current plan with our social workers? And our school social workers?
So the student wellness fund helped pay for a school nursing contract, part of it, the resource coordinators and the social workers. All that's going to have to come back to the general fund. So what we've done in our budget for next year is we've accommodated that return. And so we're trying to reduce in other areas to accommodate that return back. If we keep that same scope.
With the hope of not changing the plan now with our school social workers. That's the plan.
That's the plan. That's the, that's the desire because it's part of the strategic plan. Yes. Good question.
Mr. Lindy?
Thank you, Treasure Wagner. It's really interesting to follow some of the changes with this new state funding formula. And I so appreciate you and your team because I feel like this job is hard under the best of circumstances. And there's been, I don't know how many rounds of federal funding changes plus state funding changes because of COVID, plus the new funding formula. So this is just an unbelievably challenging time. And I just wanted to first of all, lead with thank you for the work you are doing.
You're most welcome.
I think, I, I just had two questions. The first one was, as you look at this five-year forecast, you've seen a lot of these in the past. If you were to think of a scale of one to 10, one like being panic and 10 being like the best you have ever felt about one of these five-year forecasts, how do you feel about our current overall position?
Say about eight. And we have complete control of our own spending decisions. So I put it as part, unless it's state law compliance or whatever. We have, there's a lot of room for decision-making about what we spend our money on. And so in my seven years as a treasurer, those last three years always looked really ugly and it freaks everybody out. But the state has a biennial budget and so it's really hard to predict what's going to happen in five years without legal action that's going to happen, legislative actions, excuse me, that needs to happen to support this funding plan.
Eight sounds great. Thank you. And then my, my last question was, I don't think this, this is not time-sensitive, but at some point, have we ever looked at the, all revenues together per student? All costs together per student? And just look at like a, like a what we spend per students?
We, I have in the past. We haven't done it recently, but that, what we're trying to do with this new budget cycle is to make it more holistic that way. And so we will be.
Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the presentation here and also in finance. Just a couple of comments that I recall from finance particularly. And that was your concern about any new initiatives regarding this budget and whether or not they were even something we can contemplate. So I would like you to talk a little bit about the concerns. And then also now this other issue looming, impacting our, our budget. We're not sure where it will go. Is there, you know, envisioning the future regarding transportation? And, and then I have a third question, but I'll let you talk about those two things.
Okay, so the clear picture in the forecast is that we need to really keep our expenses flat, right? Because we will erode into our cash balance, unless we want to go back for a new levy, new money levy. So given our current budget was $690 million in the general fund, if we do not, not one new thing, we will increase the budget by $23 million because of the COLP that we're bargains, the step increases that are already in the salary schedules and the amount, $8 million that has to come back to the general fund from the CLIF. So already, without doing anything new, we're at $23 million more. So in order to get back down to that level, we have to decide, how do we make room for that $23 million? What do we not spend money on to make room for that? And then if there's anything new on top of that, what more do we have to dig in? So it's a matter of determining where are we going to spend our money and get the biggest bang for our buck in terms of academic investment? And sometimes it's going to be tough to decide how to scale that back. But clearly in the plan, unless the revenues change, and when ODE finally comes out with their financial reports and things change, then we might be able to open up some more room. But for now, we need to really control our spend. What was the second question? I forgot already. Oh, transportation. Based on what I heard at Finance Committee, leasing vans to, to support our homeless population would increase our budget in transportation. So it was an, a service that was adding on to the regular services. But we don't know yet what the real plan looks like for next year. So it's hard to determine what that's going to look like.
That's kind of question, I know that you're embedding all the decisions, initial decisions about CLIF and what have you. How are we kind of watching whether or not those initial decisions are correct? Or monitoring how we're dealing with absorbing the CLIF?
Right.
And then is there any chance that as we maybe get results of some of the ways we're spending and they're not good results, can the, are we able to revisit some of that with spending?
So we've built into our budget process to look at a return on investment and, and measures towards the vital few measures that support the strategic plan. And if we're not moving that needle, then we're not going to continue to invest in those things. With the eye towards, we're going to revisit where we are. Because the CLIF plan, we had an idea of what we thought we wanted to spend money on. Some of it's spending at a higher rate, some of it's spending a lower rate. And we'll have to adjust to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the, the five-year forecast is submitted in the Treasury Report for approval tonight. I have a deadline to have it submitted by November 30.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Thank you, Treasure Wagner.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Consistent with the board's bylaws, the board has the ability to limit the hearing of the public on any single issue and will exercise the right to do so if needed. Once a request to speak has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol. This request is consistent with board protocol and we appreciate your compliance. We reserve the right to not permit you to speak if you do not comply. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all of those listening in. Thank you. And I believe we have about eight speakers.
That's right. We have about eight speakers. Our first speaker this evening is Kendra Phelps, followed by Winona Oliver, followed by Sharonda Harris. Go ahead, Ms. Phelps.
Hi, it's saying, it's not allowing me to turn on my camera. I'm sorry. Oh, here it is. No, it's saying it's disabled. Sorry.
All right, let me ask our IT, are we okay on this thing? Oh, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Phelps.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Kendra Phelps. I'm a teacher leader with CFT. I'm also a parent and aunt of CPS students. And I'm speaking to you today to share that our children do not need standardized testing every two weeks in every subject. How in the world can you justify monopolizing that much of their instructional time? To be clear, my family wants our children in school to be experienced, having meaningful learning experiences. They already take multiple tests, math, DIBELS, semester exams. This testing abuse that you are proposing or trying to force is not good for our children. It's actually making them become numb to testing. And to be quite honest, you have a crisis going on in the district that you cannot afford to continue to ignore. You have a serious staffing shortage. My son has been sitting in the gymnasium with other classrooms who also don't have a teacher for multiple bails in one day. How are you supporting and respecting the teachers and the principals in the schools doing the real work? I'm asking you to stop ignoring this and to actually address the fact that testing every student, every subject, every two weeks is too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Winona Oliver, followed by Sharonda Harris, followed by Michelle Dillingham. Go ahead, Ms. Oliver.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Winona Oliver. I would like to provide you with impactful information regarding the two-week cycle assessments students with disabilities and English as a second language learners. Information regarding accelerated learning presented by the Michigan Department of Education that the district likes to cite states that formative assessment process is planned by teachers in advance. So teachers decide when they will check the student understanding and how they will do so. Teachers also determine in advance what they will do if students have or have not learned what they have been taught. The most noteworthy word in the description is teacher. It is referenced three times in the process. That is because it is the students' teachers that have the current information about the students' strengths, weaknesses, and needs. Nowhere does it state that the administration has any inkling about the students. This is extremely important when you consider the individualized needs of students with disabilities and English as a second language learners, many which require extended time whenever they take assessments, which equates to time and a half or double time. The administration stated that teachers could just let them have a reasonable amount of extended time. Reasonable, what is reasonable? The length of extended time is stated in the student's IEP, which is a legal document and must be implemented as stated. Teachers, as stated in the accelerated learning information, are the ones who are most knowledgeable and who are the ones that should drive the formative assessment process, not the district. They know where the student's academic positioning is in regards to already provided instruction and what standards should be formatively assessed when. Teachers are asking for flexibility as it relates to the two-week cycle assessment. And we are hoping that you give them the flexibility they need for their students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharonda Harris, followed by Michelle Dillingham, followed by Ruth DeBono. Go ahead, Ms. Harris.
Good evening, everyone. Well, my name is Sharonda Harris. I'm a parent and I am representing Hughes STEM High School. As the board adopted the healthy start policy last spring, we did not think that this would affect our school community because we have already began at a healthy start time. We found out that due to metro sorter planning or school bus routes, we would be moved from a nine, we would be moved to rather a 9:15 a.m. to a 4:15 p.m. school day. The issue with metro has not only left our school with no school routes, but an unneeded and dangerous dismissal time that has our students traveling home in the dark. Our middle school athletes have also been negatively impacted by this late dismissal time. Our athletes are missing their last bell class to leave and be at games that start at 4:30 p.m. Our school has collected survey data to support the wishes of our students and family. We are asking the board to move our school back to the healthy start and end time at 8:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. the second semester. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Our next speaker is Michelle Dillingham, followed by Ruth DeBono, followed by Esther Hall. Go ahead, Ms. Dillingham.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michelle Dillingham. I work at CFT and I am testifying on the biweekly assessments on behalf of our members to protect them from retaliation. It is so disappointing that the Board of Education gave no response whatsoever to the public testimony last week on our collective concerns about the mandated tests. The question before you is, are we just adding to the stress level of kids? If we are truly trying to catch them up amid COVID and we know our schoolchildren nationwide are behind, we need to step back on testing for testing's sake. We must continue to share what's really going on in our schools right now and deal with the mental health and let teachers deal with the deficits that they are seeing. Our kids are already undergoing significant testing. Again, these tests will take up to 19% of their total precious instructional time. This is unfair to our district's children and their parents who entrust us with their child's education. Our teachers are standing up for their students and parents and refusing to participate in what amounts to data collection. We refuse again to return to the mistakes of the past, overtesting our children in our urban districts. Our public testimony to you is again our last resort. We ask you please to intervene and stop this terrible direction the administration has taken and and compel them to focus on the actual needs of our students and serve those needs. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Our next speaker is Ruth DeBono, followed by Esther Hall, followed by Shirley Jones. Go ahead, Ms. DeBono.
Hi, my name is Ruth DeBono and I'm a student at Wonos High School. And I am here with the Young Activists Coalition. Firstly, I want to echo what many other people have said and say that testing students every two weeks is, I think, very clearly a terrible idea for students and teachers. It takes away valuable class time where, you know, teachers who knew their students best would be able to be teaching them and giving them stronger learning environment and where students could be learning and growing rather than having to just do standardized tests. Additionally, in creating a good learning environment for students, it's important that students are not distracted in their classes and in their, you know, school lives, which is a place where they should feel safe and be able to learn and grow and have good experiences with their teachers and peers. By, they should not be distracted by the harm caused by punitive discipline in schools and by the police officer presence in schools. This is something that disproportionately affects black and brown students and disabled students in schools. And it's something that by ignoring the board is showing a clear disregard for the lives and education of these students. We've gone over the data many times before, so I don't think that it's necessary to tell you all the facts again. But you've seen in your own data from the Civil Rights Data Collection, which has been given by the board, by CPS to that data collection, that these, these punitive discipline policies disproportionately affect black and brown students. And by ignoring these, the harm that this causes, you are showing, I know, a clear disregard for the lives and the, you know, the people, the students who could end up in, because of the school prison pipeline, end up going into prison because of the disregard for their safety in our schools. Additionally, SRO presence in schools is very harmful for students. It only exacerbates the school, the prison pipeline, and creates an environment where students are forced to, you know, where students are forced to have these people in their schools who are there to criminalize them and punish them rather than to foster their growth and their learning, which is what school is for. Schools are a place for students to learn and grow.
Thank you, Ms. DeBono.
Our next speaker is Esther Hall, followed by Shirley Jones, followed by Maggie Nelson. Go ahead, Ms. Hall.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Can you hold on one minute, Ms. Hall? Do we know what that?
Ms. Hall, there seems to be a problem with your microphone. We'll try you back. Your microphone is not working. Our next speaker is Shirley Jones, followed by Maggie Nelson, followed by Karen Imbiss.
Hi, I'm Shirley Jones and I'm the grandparent. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
And I'm the grandparent of a student at Gamble High School. And my purpose tonight is to strongly, strongly encourage the board to consider returning to the previous start time of 8:30. It's, it's, it's not, it's not so much that the start time, that's the problem, is the dismissal time. This late dismissal presents a real problem because my, my, my grandchild misses a lot of the last bell because they're involved in extracurricular activities. Cincinnati Jazz Academy that they have to go all the way across town for. So they get out a few minutes early, they miss instructional time in the last bell. And then there's the athletic activities after school. And if they have to leave, they miss instruction. And it really does present a problem not to mention that it's dark now. And next month, it's going to be dark by 5 o'clock. And so it really is a problem. We had a healthy start time. We're hoping that we can get a healthy dismissal time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So thank you, Ms. Jones. Our next speaker is Maggie Nelson, followed by Karen Imbiss, followed by Ms. Hall again. Go ahead, Ms. Nelson.
Hi. As a CPS mom and teacher, I do not support the new two-week cycle temperature check assessments that have been mandated by the district. Even my kindergartner is being affected. Other parents I have spoken with who are not CPS employees did not even know this was happening to their kids. My child is losing out on precious instructional time with her amazing teachers, and I don't even understand why. This is her third year with her teachers, and we have never questioned whether or not she's receiving quality instruction or doubted that her teachers know how she is doing academically. But these are not state or federal standardized tests. I believe that if you don't make the right decision to stop assess the assessments and you don't give teachers a voice, then parents should be notified when the testing is taking place and have the right to opt their child out. Lastly, as a parent, this makes me really uncomfortable. I do not want my kid to be used as a pawn in whatever game is being played here. I want the schools to be fully staffed and truly supportive. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Our next speaker is Karen Imbiss, followed by Esther Hall, followed by CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Imbiss.
Good evening. My name is Karen Imbiss, and I am a field representative for the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers. Teachers are justifiably afraid of retaliation should they address the school board during the hearing of the public. So on their behalf, I am once again sharing their grave concerns about the district's new biweekly assessments. The district has repeated and repeated that the top-down mandate regarding biweekly assessments will accelerate learning. But saying that does not make it so. I have sincerely asked numerous administrators to explain how the tests accelerate learning. No one has given me a compelling explanation, and the district has failed to persuade hundreds of teachers too. Unable to persuade teachers that this new additional testing justifies the loss of instructional time, the district has resorted to threatening teachers across the district with discipline and termination if they will not comply. Teachers are insulted, demoralized, and terrified, but they are fighting for their students. That is why they are taking a courageous stand against the two-week assessments, embracing increasingly harsh threats of discipline, which are a poor substitute for effective leadership. The most important role of CPS leadership is to make sure that every classroom, every day, is led by a highly qualified teacher. But what we have seen this year, when we all knew that COVID would cause higher teacher absence rates, is that the district has utterly failed its basic responsibility, leaving dozens of classrooms each day without qualified substitutes. There are 165 teaching vacancies in the district. Classes are overloaded. The lack of overload Paris disrupts the learning environment, and specialized units are missing their one-on-one Paris or diverted to cover other roles. Many intervention specialist caseloads exceed the caseload limits established by state law. Properly staffing the schools would have a much bigger impact on student growth than a top-down mandate that is not earned teacher buy-in.
Speaker is Esther Hall, followed by Delorise Pennington, followed by Ms. Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Hall.
I'm.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Ms. Hall, I, we, we apologize, but for some reason, your voice in your microphone, there's a whole different sound coming out. So we're not able to hear you. Is it, take, take the headsets off. Can you unplug the headset? No. Is it? I'm sorry.
Sorry, Ms. Hall, we can't hear you. Ms. Pennington and then Ms. Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Pennington.
Hi, Ms. Hall and I are speaking on the same topic, but I'm going to speak from two separate, two separate topics here. First, I want to address the assessment testing for children with disabilities. My daughter has autism. She has extreme anxiety and depression around school. When we think about her extended time that she is allowed during testing, her teacher, her intervention specialist, specialist, we be spending a vast majority of her time testing her. And and when we look at this increase in anxiety, mental health on our children with everything that is going on with the coronavirus, it's just not okay. When we look at our mandates, when we think about contacting Columbus, or how are you going to continue to provide those same amenities that she has currently in her IEP? I'm not very sure. I have multiple children in the CPS district, but I do want to speak on behalf of children with disabilities. The last part is Ms. Hall and I are both requesting what has been requested previously about healthier start times. Again, we are not, we talked about the dark, but we also want to talk about the cold, the weather, when those buses are going to be struggling because of the snow. We really would like for our start time to go back to the 8:30 start, if 8:45 at the latest, to think about all children. When I think about this, we really want to make it equitable for all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before, before we move on, we have one more speaker, is that Ms. Sellers? Okay, from Ms. Hall, because we not able to hear her clearly, if she wants, if we can respond to her one-on-one, if she would write her, if she might want to write comments in the chat box or if she has a specific question, write that in the chat box and we'll get somebody to respond to her.
Speaker is CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Sellers.
Good evening. This evening I am speaking on behalf of the teachers in CPS to protect them from their fears of retaliation if they speak up. We are hoping that we will be able to work through this testing process. But I do want to report to you this evening that teachers are still receiving threats on a regular basis. This is happening daily, causing undue stress for teachers and principals at the same time. at the same time they are working during a pandemic with unsafe staffing levels. We are still having high numbers of positive COVID cases and quarantines for both students and vaccinated employees. Teachers are combining classes on a daily basis because we do not have a sufficient number of Dubs, Paris Security, and other employees to provide the best quality staffing possible to our students. This toxic culture is not productive for employees to work in. On a daily basis, teachers are having anxiety breakdowns due to the stress. Globally, the teaching profession is in crisis. Countries across the globe are working to improve teaching and learning by giving teachers more autonomy, increasing intentional collaboration, and treating teachers as professionals to improve teacher well-being as a pathway to improve the student well-being. Everyone across the globe agreed that there needs to be cuts in the useless bureaucracy and paperwork that teachers are expected to do. Yet, here in Cincinnati, we have spoken up to the district and the board for the past two months about the testing abuses taking place for our students and how the administration is threatening employees in our schoolhouses. Both principals and teachers are being threatened on a regular basis. This is not acceptable, and it is not how anyone on this board should want any CPS employee to be treated. I did receive a letter from Dan Hoing, which he stated that the two-week assessments are a pedagogical tool that are part of the district's curriculum. As any educator knows, these mandatory assessments are not an effective tool as a strategy for accelerated learning based on the footnoted link in his letter. The tools, the assessments that we're using are not always even aligned to what teachers are teaching or with the standards they're expected to master with their students. Opportunities to accelerate learning relies on a robust tier-one instruction that includes great appropriate assignments and strong instruction, deep engagement, and teachers who hold high expectations for their students. Additional student assessments do not support this loss of instructional time. Instructurally embedded assessments are intended to be relaxed, constant, and integrated within classroom instruction. Teachers must have the flexibility to adapt instructurally embedded assessments to align with their standards and reflect the delivery of the content within each classroom. Instruction and allow for customized experiences for each student. There are many types of effective IEAs. Teachers must be treated as the professionals they are and be able to create their own formative assessments that will inform their instruction. But I also want you to be aware that teachers and administrators have had a new disciplinary model imposed on them just recently. There is a four-step process determination. This disciplinary model does not follow the negotiated process and is actually an unfair labor practice based on what we have written with the district. So I hope that this disciplinary model goes away and that the threats towards employees ceases at this time because it's not effective for anyone. We should not be using this as a distraction from the job of instruction which all of our students are in need of. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll move on to the announcements. Are there any kudos? Okay, no kudos today. Ms. Bates, please read and present the retirement.
Yes, I have one retirement to announce and acknowledge, and that is from our civil service personnel, Marilyn Williams, who was a food service helper. So we congratulate Ms. Williams on her retirement and thanks her for her service to our students.
Great, thank you. So we have three board matters items. The first one is transportation update, Ms. Bolton.
Yes, thank you. This is a continuation from last Monday's board meeting when I enquired about a Metro sort of press release on a Friday, the 5th of November, in which that press release suggested that Sorda/Metro had not had any direct communication from us. They claimed also in the press release that the numbers of ridership or what have you were at pre-COVID numbers. And they talked in terms of true-up the passes, as does the contract require. And then there were some references as well to the fact that they were disappointed that we had not allowed them necessarily to continue involving the individual principals rather than talking to our district leadership. And I enquired about it because I was really unclear because I know we had had direct communication with Sorda/Metro and before the 5th and after the 5th. I was surprised that they are claiming that we are using Metro/Sorda at the level of pre-COVID, and our data doesn't necessarily indicate that. And I know we've made a publicly no, we've made a public records request to get some of that data. And then I also wanted to compliment the superintendent in making sure that the discussions are happening at a district-wide level, but remind everybody that every one of our principals indeed told everything that they needed to say in an adjustment as we were in the first six weeks of this effort. And indeed, some adjustments were made, but after that individual adjustment, it falls to the superintendent and the district leadership. So the reason I brought it up was I was concerned that there's some sort of miscommunication or mis, how shall I say it? Characterization of the communication between Sorda/Metro and us, and just wanted to make sure that the administration was aware that that press release is out there. And I appreciate the administration being able to produce and share it so quickly. But little did I know, in the next two weeks, some of these claims would be expanded, and some of these concerns from Metro/Sorda would lead to a completely different position as to the partnership that has existed for many decades between CPS and Sorda/Metro. And it's of concern to me. And as we said in Finance Committee, whatever the future is, we must get our children and our teenagers to school and back in a reasonable time, a safe way, and that is our priority. And we kind of thought that that was Metro's priority as well after all these years. So I just wanted to be concerned that maybe that press release sent out on a Friday, 5th of November, was sort of a precursor to what is now followed along the lines of more public fostering. And just hope that everyone in the community knows that we are very interested to re-envision the future partnership with Metro and are concerned that maybe they're not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bolton. The next matter, I'm going to ask Mr. Lindy if he could give us a brief update on the superintendent's search and perhaps talk a little bit about how we're involving our newly elected board members?
Sure, thanks, President Jones. I think last time, we had a really wonderful presentation from a search firm, sharing a couple of key points. I think one was the scope and diversity of the community engagement that had taken place. So we heard from people at every single school, over 100 ZIP codes. We heard from, I think it was over 3,500 different respondents, almost half of whom were people of color. The largest group in there were families and parents of students. But we also heard from teachers and from students themselves. And out of that grew a very clear job description based on what we heard from the community. So over the next several weeks, we will be working with that search firm and with our newly elected board members to begin the process of getting to a set of finalists for this position. I think that the timing on some of those pieces are still being developed. But one thing that we are excited to share is that this current board and the newly elected board members are united and working together to work through this transition process so that we find the right and best next leader for the community, so that we can come back with our finalists, involve them in that final stage of the search, and present, I think, a really united front moving forward. Is there anything there in particular that you'd like to hear more about?
No, Ms. Bolton?
I would just add to that good summary, the fact that we've already had two meetings in executive session with our newly elected board members and our current board members. So it's already begun, and I think it's been of good value, and it serves as a great transition for other things as well.
Right. I think the one thing that we can add to that in terms of this process is that it really is a very good onboarding process, which will continue. I mean, it's very important that they come, and they're here tonight, which we really appreciate the dedication to that. And I think they'll find it easier when they finally do sit in one of these chairs on January 1. The shock value will have worn off by then, and they so you're going to hit the ground running. But we really appreciate them participating thus far. So thank you, Ms. Lindy. Okay. So the final board matters item is regarding the transition to back to the IOC in the physical space. And I made an assignment at the last meeting to have administration look at the capacity of the IOC. So I wanted to share that with board members. And we can talk about perhaps when we might want to begin to bring people back into the IOC. And then I'll also be making an assignment to Policy Committee. So Mr. Hoing responded to us that the capacity in this auditorium is 176 seats. And the district, it modeled, the recommendation was similar to what we do for indoor athletic events, which is to operate at 50% capacity. So if we use the same rule for 50% capacity, there would be seating for 88 people with another 24 to 36 seats at tables for administration, technology staff, media. So we are prepared right now to return to in-person if the board is willing to do that. And I would just need to know, I guess I'm proposing that maybe whenever the first meeting in December is, we would do that. I also think that one of the assignments that I'd like to make has more to do with consistency in the process and the board meetings and so, and I'll assign that later. But do board members have questions or comments about that, Ms. Dow?
Yes, thank you, President Jones. No questions, just a comment that I think pretty much all of our committee meetings have returned to this option. And I'm okay with returning to that for the full board meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I think one of the questions that we would have is we, I think I've heard board members say we want to maintain the ability for the virtual connection. The question would be, what about the virtual connection for hearing the public? I happen to be one of those who I know people are going to scream at me, but I don't care. I'm used to being screamed at. But is that, I think that the virtual option would be for those, could be designated for those people who just want to observe, just tune in. And the reason I say that is, you know, this is a business meeting, and we want the meeting to occur. And I think to add another layer where we're adding time and all of that would be a difficult task to manage. Not that we couldn't. It might take a little more time for us to do that or transition that back, but that's just kind of my position on it. So if board members have comments about that, I appreciate hearing that as well. Any thoughts?
Yes, President, I have a question. When we were doing in-person pre-pandemic, was there a limitation to how many speakers at that time? Or was there like a certain time you had to sign up before the board meeting started? What kind of stipulations, and how can we transition that over to virtual? Just to make it kind of, because I think our participation from families virtually has been so great that I would hate to just not have that if there's some way to kind of follow some of those same pathways. I don't know how that looks. I'm willing to explore that.
Well, that's exactly what I was saying, is that we may have to transition that slowly, test it out. I would probably assign that to, I don't know if it's policy, but I have to think which committee to assign. And there's some policy implications too. But the issue then is, we have a process for doing it in-house, and they have to sign up and that kind of thing. But then we also have to think about paper transfers. What happens if somebody write, you know, I mean, it's all of those kind of health concerns. But in addition to that, then you also have to coordinate, if people do present virtually, what would that mean for it? And it becomes, how do you facilitate the agenda in the most efficient way when you're trying to balance and do both of these? You know, it's all of those kinds of things.
Right, and I would just force the idea of exploring that more intensely.
Okay, and I hear you. And that's noted, but I think you also have to understand that committee meetings are a little different, they're smaller. And so it's just a little
I got that. The streaming is pretty important, basically, my friend.
I got you.
Or the participation in that.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I know that the masking will be required because it's a district-wide requirement. And I believe that state law would not allow us to have only people that are vaccinated to appear. So those are two issues. And obviously, we're going to, by doing it in half, we're going to still have the distance piece.
Yes, seating, seating capacity?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the lower tiers here, where our administration and staff and sometimes other guests, that is totally off limits to the public.
That's correct.
Okay. And then my last thing to Ms. Fowler's point of view. I think when we did our virtual, the reason, one of the reasons that we make people sign up in the first five minutes is that that was the process that we use in-person here, that you can't decide halfway through it, you want to say something. So at least there's that parallel.
Well, the parallel, it's a little bit different. When we were here before, they had 30 minutes prior to the meeting.
Yes.
So it was, they signed up. Our meeting starts at 6:30. They had to be in here and signed up by 6 o'clock.
That's a good point.
And so that's the distinguishing factor that we, you know. And that's why I'm saying it might be worth, maybe health and safety. I'm just trying to think what committee to maybe look at some of the consistencies and how we might figure out in terms of process, how to do that, how to improve on that, you know. I'm open, I think we're open to suggestions around that. Yes, Mr. Maraski.
So first, appreciate it, President Jones, and I'm excited to have people come back. First, my opinion, I tend to lean, to answer your question directly, I tend to lean toward allowing people to speak virtually. I just think the access that's been created with all this is great. That said, I do think that your assignment probably belongs in Policy Committee because I don't know if there are even any, I mean, there are certainly laws that are back in effect regarding what constitutes a forum for us, how many of us have to be here. I don't know if there's anything
We have to be
I know, that, well, at least four of us to have a meeting. Because I mean, I've piped in and not been able to vote. But what I'm getting at is, I don't know if there are any rules regarding what you're saying, like this hearing of the public. It would make sense to me if there were, but I don't know. So that's why I think maybe having it in Policy Committee SDN to look at is probably a good idea.
Actually, I was, my initial thought was to assign it to Policy, not only for just what you said, but also consistency of process. Is it two minutes? Is it three minutes? Is it five minutes? You know, so I think it would be appropriate to assign it to Policy. There are no state rules around this piece of it. There are no state rules. There are no state rules, uh, but I think we can, um, from what I understand, we can make local decisions about that. The only thing that doesn't change is that we have to have the, we have to have a quorum of board members here. So, um, that's about it. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the comment. Any, any other comments? So I'll make the assignment later. Uh, Ms. Bolton, did you have your hand up? Okay. Okay. I think we're ready for our resolution of the night. Ms. Bolton, you have it?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm very pleased, uh, to present this. The board has had some discussions about this, uh, in public session and we are aware of what it is. But most importantly, it is emblematic of the great relationship that this school district has with the city of Cheviot. Um, it's a resolution authorizing the acceptance of territory from Oak Hill's local school district, Hamilton County, Ohio, and authorizing and approving related matters. And this is about some property and moving ahead to the benefit for both the Oak Hill School District and us, as well as to the benefit of the city of Cheviot. I hope for, uh, passage.
Okay. Ms. Bolton presents for, um, approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you.
I have a, just one, since we're walking down memory lane. We just also wanted to thank for the, maybe the last time, uh, Mrs. Bates's incredible ambassadorship that she has exercised with Cheviot for all these years. And so it's proof positive. Diplomacy works. We have a great relationship with, with, uh, uh, administration of Cheviot and that's why this would be, yeah, in, in such a, uh, uh, congenial and, uh, way, very collegiate way. And, uh, I hope that continues. It will.
It will.
Yeah, it will. Thank you, Mel.
Okay. Um, who, who made the second?
The Bates.
Bates.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Hi.
Mr. Marowski?
Yep.
President Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Superintendent Amat, do you have a report?
Yes. Rob, if you can please pull it up. And if you can go ahead and to the next slide.
There we go. I want to start off by thanking our stakeholders for their engagement regarding two-week cycle assessments and want to say, we agree with you. We hear and heard from our parents. And the first being, no more additional standardized or high-stakes testing. That is not what we are implementing. Standardized and high-stakes testing such as third-grade guarantee or ACT has consequences, right? Like not moving on to the third grade or the score you receive on that ACT or SAT score, uh, will determine what college you will attend. What we are implementing is two-week assessments that are ungraded. They are temperature checks that allow teachers to personalize student instruction, real-time, and these are best practices. I heard an increase of nineteen percent of loss of instructional time. We agree. That's too much. The instructional time for assessment has not increased. Based on a seven-hour student day, it will take roughly two to ten percent of class time over a two-week period. The output is impactful, allowing for personalized instruction for each student. And lastly, don't pay more money to, uh, testing companies, um, and, and, and really work with the teachers. We agree. We agree. We did not purchase any additional tests in order to support our students. CPS collaborated with teachers and invested in their time and expertise to pilot curriculum inclusive of assessment and provided input into the curriculum-based assessment. So once again, I thank all of our stakeholders for sharing that information. What we also learned with engaging our parents, that we need to further engage our families. So here are some upcoming events. Um, one is today. So we're thinking alike. We're all on the same page. We have our parent advisory board tonight and, uh, November 22nd at eight PM. We have a Facebook event, November 23rd. And then we have a focus group with our PTO leaders coming up, November 29. I would say be on the lookout for ongoing communications through text, email, video, social media, and other forms of media. So thank you again to our families for sharing their thoughts. We will continue to collaborate with teachers. They have a format, structures in place, like Curriculum Council, who help, uh, recommend the adopted curriculum. We have a textbook adoption committee, the last, um, board meeting. I shared the success of our science process. We had over a thousand, uh, people participate. We will continue that process. Uh, we have EIP where I attend along with, um, principals and teachers. I meet monthly with CFT President Miss Sellers. There's monthly meetings with the curriculum team and CFT, um, and, and collaboration and support is important. I would also like to say, ongoing job-embedded teacher support through PDs, sharing of best practices and personalized assistance. We have teacher coaches, so teachers helping teachers. I know this is a big undertaking, right? Um, but we are student-centered and we're going to support our teachers everywhere we can to make sure all kids have equitable education and access to high-quality instruction. There will be videos and other communications to share tips and tricks, examples of working in classrooms, schools which assessments are already working. Next slide, speaking of success, I would like to take this moment to share some of our students' success. CPS students celebrating throughout the district their growth. So we have Oiler here, if you can see that, um, from their temperature checks. Students are monitoring their own growth, um, from October twenty, twenty-ninth through, um, November twelfth. I mean, there are like over twenty percent gains on student growth. At TAF, they're measuring their nonsense word fluency in that little paper clip there. I have done that before. Kids will move their paper clip up from one all the way to seventeen. So students have visual models. Um, this was creative at Douglas. You see that, uh, little racetrack racing towards mastery? And you see those little box, uh, cars there and kids are moving their box car along that highway to demonstrate mastery of that information. And students are happy to show their progress. And this is a, uh, an example at Woodford of a bar graph. So we know it's a big undertaking, but we want to celebrate our students and encourage them to continue to work hard and our teachers and sta- staff and principals are there to support. November is National Native American Heritage Month, so we just want to give honor and celebrate our cultures. And then just a little, um, to learn more, there's a little, a website there. But again, just honoring our National Native American History Month. Next slide. Bengals player bonds with students at Von Hill. Player Drew Sample stopped by at Von Hill last week, um, and talked about his career and played a little football with our students in Von Hill. So thank you, Mr. Sample. Community resources during the holiday season, we want to make sure the public knows there, there are a variety, variety of resources available, food, healthcare, job hunting, and transportation. And it's listed on our CPS website, cps-k12.org. We are also having a court drive through December 3rd. Codes can be dropped off here at the Education Center or at Iowa Street through December 3rd. Project Connect is doing a toy drive up until December 11th. Um, and so the toy drive will take place December 11th, noon to four at Woodward High School. Anything from books, toys, and clothing for students of all age groups. Our Beyond the Tassel Facebook live series continues. Our next series is November 30th at two PM. The CPS College Team will discuss resources for immigrants and undocumented students. And lastly, I would like to leave you with some important dates. From the Thanksgiving holiday break, November 24th through the 26th. When we return, we will have parent-teachers conferences from the 29th to December 3rd. And that, um, our high school and magnet lottery are occurring this year, December 7th through March 11th. That concludes the, uh, superintendent's report along with my written report for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the revised superintendent's recommendation?
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you.
I heard about six yeses from the two of you. Okay. All right. Do we have any inquiries and updates tonight? Inquiries and updates? All right. Assignments. Mr. Marowski?
Um, I would like to make an assignment to the administration. Uh, interestingly, as one of the loudest proponents for the healthy start times, um, find it ironic in some sense that I'm making this, but, uh, listening to the parents tonight and, uh, interestingly, we had Hughes present on all the great things they've done, right? Lately, there are a handful of schools that already had a healthy start time. Hughes being one, we had listened to the Fulcham Schroeder tonight. They had a healthy start time. And then to accommodate the other schools, they agreed to start even later, which of course, maybe their kids are getting out at four fifteen, four thirty, which has caused all kinds of headaches at Schroeder. There's a bunch of things. But either way, and it Hughes as well. Um, you know, I, I'm not, uh, smart enough or close to, enough to this stuff to, to say that this is something that could or should be done for second semester. So the assignment is, could we look at what that might look like? See if the rest of the community feels this way, because again, they're already at a healthy start time and then they just moved so everyone else could. But since Metro has left us in this position, it's a moot point in some respects because it doesn't matter anymore because Metro is not offering the service nor do they seemingly intend to going forward. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, uh, piggybacking on that, if I would. Um, again, having spent four years regarding the healthy starts, we do not want this to be an additional casualty of this, uh, Metro arrangement. Uh, however, Mr. Marowski is absolutely right. The way that the healthy starts worked out was for the convenience of Metro when they had our extra routes. They were the ones that determined that even some of the already healthy start high schools would, uh, go even healthier. So, uh, the, so there is a reason for the administration, as we re-envision transportation, that has to include Sorda and Metro in some way to review regarding the healthy starts, uh, that were, that were determined by Metro since they no longer provide that service anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I, my assignment is to Policy Committee to, uh, look at the policy on hearing of the public, which basically, um, will help us bring some consistency to us moving that transition to moving back into the IOC. So.
I accept that assignment.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Okay. Is, any other assignment? Having no other business, I declare the meeting adjourned.